Show me the other one, the other one there. Uh, to make a request, the county commission for them to deed the properties that you'll see in front of you. The first one, St. Benedict's Avenue. So can you give me the other, the other PDF? Some reason that one show correctly. Maybe this one will be there. Yeah, there we go. If you could just zoom in on this. So this parcel here that we're referring to is St. Benedict's Avenue is just north of Casey's gas station. Uh, you can actually see that about three quarters of their north driveway entrance is actually on the county lot, not on their lot. Uh, what this would be is the county would deed us that lot that you see highlighted in red. Uh, that was identified in our MOU with the county of transitioning County Route seventeen to the city. Uh, this parcel and the other one you'll see, uh, those are identified that the county has agreed that they would deed them to the city. We just have to make a formal request to them for that deed. So, uh, what we'd be looking at is this parcel here. Then we'd be able to continue St. Benedict's Avenue over to County Route seventeen. Uh, to give you a reference also, this would align up straight across the street from the new, the new entrance of Horace Elementary on the north side where you have their bus loop. This is where that would align up to. We are working very closely with the school district on the alignment and the county to make sure that they met. And that's what we have here. So the first one like I said is be requests that parcel land, uh, from them deed it. If you go to the next PDF. Um, the next PDF here shows parcel land in regards to, so yeah, the top one, sorry.
This one though?
Yeah. The other ones there, yep. So where this would be is the southwest corner of the fifty-second Avenue Roundabout. We'd be working with the county, uh, county engineer to identify exactly what all they would need to retain for the construction of the roundabout. However, anything remaining from the county, we'd be asking for them to deed that to the city. Uh, deeding that to the city also, that was identified in our MOU for transition County Route seventeen. Uh, that would give us, or if we want to work with the park district to do either some sort of park. Uh, I know one idea we're throwing up, I was working with Julie whole culture for planning. Sorry Julie, call you out there, but, uh, one idea that we had was, uh, we could put like argryvum or something like that there. This would give people opportunity to see different types of trees that work in our metro. And we really don't have one in this area or in the metro, if I remember correctly. So, uh, it would give us something that we'd be able to do that is unique to the area and probably wouldn't be much for a developable land anyways. So that's what we were looking at, we'd be able to do in the future, solely do something. Uh, but like I said, we're just asking for approval, uh, from council to be able to request deeds for both of these properties.
Yeah, I think I'll put these two together.
Yeah, you can do.
For a motion to accept, you can, this is going to be mentioned over here.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept, uh, the request for deed transfers from Cass County for St. Benedict's Avenue and for southeast, uh, the southeast corner of fifty-second Avenue, County Route seventeen.
Yep. All right, Jeff makes a motion, can I get a second? Let me do the second, all right? All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, future land use map.
Okay, just a second here. I don't think you have that one, I'll pull it up on night. Here. I also gave council a hard copy, if you have one extra one if anybody wants to. But, um, what this is for is bringing back, uh, ta- a tabled item in regards to future land use map amendment. This would be in regards to land around the sixty-fourth avenue corridor, east of County Route seventeen, and then extending south for about three quarters of a mile. Uh, the original proposal was brought to council, identified pretty much the entire sixty-fourth avenue corridor as mixed use. Going from a suburban development to mixed use for compact suburban. Sorry, I gotta get TV to work here. It looks official. Uh, in working with the property owners to keep the original, the folks that had desired the mixed use proposal for really the larger lots along sixty-fourth on the north side right over here. Uh, in this proposal, where one of the developers came and spoke in regards to council about they did not agree with mixed use. This was originally proposed as mixed use, what they're asking for is this parcel land right here. That would be future land use map showing as commercial. This orange area, burnt orange area would be compact development. So that would be your denser development activity. They retained the mixed use that was originally proposed along the south side of sixty-fourth avenue. And then as you go farther in, you where you see this burnt orange color, they're proposing the compact development. We do have a plat that is, is going through staff review right now for Southdale fourth addition, which would be right here. The other difference that we have from what was originally shown to council is there is originally proposed a new land use category. We're proposing to eliminate that. Instead, use suburban, which is the lower density development or residential development. So that would be what you see in yellow, proposing that to serve as a buffer between the compact development and the larger lots. So what you'd see there suburban would give you lots worth roughly at least seventy foot wide. Lot width, they could be bigger. So that would, it also gives a clear definition of where expectation is instead of trying to use another category. And it also forces a buffer in these areas so you don't have a forty foot wide lot going against a two acre lot. So that's what we're trying to mitigate. The other addition that you would see on this map for change up for your consideration would be, uh, just on north side elements addition is to have that same concept there serving like a buffer where you have suburban just north of them. That way you don't have the forty foot lots.
Right, this is transitional strip.
Yep, so that's what we're trying to do. So there's, th- those are the changes that are being proposed on this. Uh, it is slightly here, you know, different from what was originally proposed from the planning commission and originally proposed to council. What was being proposed to council towards the end of it from one of the developers was what you see before you, except for the suburban being used as the buffer.
Yep.
I have consulted with, uh, the landowners within these areas and the buffer would be impacting their land or the ones that own the developer.
Yeah.
Uh, and they indicated that they're all right with that. Now look at Chris, Chris is right there, so he can answer that too. But, and I do appreciate Chris working with us and, uh, Mr. Hoff, they, uh, you know, we're trying to refine this to where we get all the landowners in pretty much agreement as much as possible, so.
Russ, you got any heartburn on those stuff? Do you think in there they're causing any constipation?
Here, I'll zoom out a little bit more so you can see.
No, the, uh, we're not exactly happy with him removing our transition that we've voted for. But he's, he's putting it in there. Now, what's going to eventually happen under the new zoning ordinance is we're gonna have to redefine some of that stuff anyway. Because, uh,
Yeah.
what we're, see the preview, the, uh, the residentials are going to be changing on how they're defined.
Okay.
Which, uh, which they need.
Yeah, and you, you talked about that, so that shouldn't be a surprise.
Yeah. So I do have a question.
Yeah.
Not necessarily related to that, that road is coming down through there.
Right here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Once it hits Adams, is that road able to handle? I'm guessing that's gonna be a major problem with that.
It's classified as, yeah, right now.
Okay, so you're gonna have to repair that in Adams then to then to handle it?
Well, right now it's gravel.
I know, that's not.
Yes.
Okay.
That road would have to be improved and.
That, that road has two driveways on it.
I know.
And when it's done, it'll have two driveways or one.
Well, might have a couple because of school or park or something.
You know, it'll, it'll have entrances for the school and the park.
Yeah.
But otherwise, no houses will have, will have, uh, driveways on that road. That's going as a, uh, a collector.
I just, I realize it's not, it's off topic of what we're trying to talk about, I just, I noticed that and I was like, the road, guessing one's gonna be a lot nicer than the other unless we improve Adams, so.
No, the whole, the whole thing is gonna be one project.
Okay.
They may not know it yet, well, you guys, you guys need to decide that that whole road is one project.
Fair enough. You guys are gonna get that eventually. There. I figured it's coming. On how to address this stuff. So for that one.
Understood.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Okay.
Do you may have any other questions on this one or do I have to come up for a motion to accept?
It's all moved.
Chelsea made a motion. It's all motioned, it's there. All right. You get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Jeff does the second. All right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. TA grants, there's, you know, what would be.
All right, transportation alternatives grant applications are due to MetroCog by Friday of this week. Transportation alternatives are administered through the, uh, North Dakota Department of Transportation. Uh, the difference with the TA grants is they have to be constructed to NDDOT standards. The plans and specs have to be NDDOT, so it adds a little bit more, uh, work in the, uh, plan preparation and that. So, um, the city's been successful in getting both TA and RTP Recreation Trails program grants through the North Dakota Park and Rec. Uh, this period right now is for the TA grants, so, um, with that being said, um, our office identified three areas for a potential application. Um, as you can see, number one would be a redundant shared use path on the east side of County Route seventeen, south of the roundabout, connecting up with Lakeview Drive. Second one that they're showing is from the roundabout west to approximately Sunnyside Drive on the south side of Seventy-sixth Avenue. And the third would be just an extension of the, uh, currently funded shared use path uh, from basically the entrance of Southdale Farms, I think it's a seventieth, or not seventieth, seventy-third uh, north to the Lions Park area. So, um, as you can see in the sketch that we've got is that, uh, right now we're working on the plans for the area in black that's identified as to be built in twenty twenty-two. Bids will be opened in April of that year for construction. Uh, we have twenty twenty-three funded through TA from roundabout up to Southdale Farms. And we have the Center Avenue multimodal, which will be built in twenty twenty-four, and that was just partially, partially funded. So, uh, we're looking at twenty twenty-five construction. So what I was going, what I wanted to do was number one, let you know about the process. Two, let you know when the deadline is. Number three, um, what your priority is as far as city council. I know that our office has reached out to a couple of you, got comments back from you. Uh, they've also reached out to MetroCog. MetroCog's one who reviews these applications on the metro level, so they'll review Fargo's, West Fargo's, and Moreheads. Uh, now, Morehead doesn't matter, uh, Horace, Morehead's Min dot funded, not North Dakota D O T funded. So, um, we just wanted to bring it all, wanted to bring it back to, to you, uh, just to kind of get a consensus from the council, or the city council as to which one we wanna push on with. So each one has its merits, each one has its, uh, downfalls. One thing that is a problem with number three, it continues the vision of working its way north. But it's a long stretch that the, to, that the, uh, TA funding wouldn't fund the whole thing. And right now we're seeing with concrete shared use paths, it's kind of tough to fund. We used to be able to get about seventeen hundred feet of path in, and we aren't getting that much now. So the last shared use path we did was two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars and prices have gone up since then. And two hundred, or hundred eighty-six five of that was grant funding. This one is up to two hundred thousand. The one that you got for twenty twenty-three, next year, this next go-around depends on what's available. So any comments, questions, or concern? I mean, what, what, how would you like the three? Do you wanna go a completely different direction? I know Chelsea, you've had some, some interaction continuing north. All right.
Do you need those letters by Friday?
It would be handy, yes. Not gonna happen. Maybe you don't absolutely have to have it, but you could say who you solicited. Who you've asked. We've got last year's too.
How many did you usually, I mean, I remember that one year, you used to give them like three letters or something?
Well, usually.
Or notice would be good.
I know, I know, I, that was, uh.
Our office.
But yeah.
Or notice would be good, sorry.
You're repeating yourself.
Point taken.
Get it good.
Twice.
But yeah.
I, yeah.
I know that helps reinforce it.
So in the past, we've had school, sheriff, lions, boy scouts, girl scouts. Um, they've been kind of hit or miss, boy scouts and girl scouts. Uh, lions, can't remember. Um, county, county has to sponsor because they're, um, you're under five thousand people at the moment. We haven't had a problem getting anything sponsored by, by, um, uh, the county. They're all, they're all for anything pedestrian.
Yeah.
So, um, Carol Zent has been one in the past with the Horace Elementary School. I don't know if it's something to get from, you know, middle school and the high school, or if it just needs to come from the school in general. That's who's been talked to. Sheriff John has written a letter in the past. Uh, so those are, those are the typical ones. I don't know if there's any other ones that would be beneficial to have.
Probably the more powerful is the school ones, if the schools will get behind that, that's, if they give a blessing for it, that's usually all you need.
Yeah.
Just the county will go along with it for now.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. So they typically aren't due until the end of December. But with Horace being part of the metropolitan or area, has to go through MetroCog and they moved the deadline to the middle of November, so.
That was awfully nice of them.
Well, Vismark is in October, so I can, we can talk and see when, if they can come in, you know.
I'll send them tomorrow.
Yeah.
So what do we wanna do with this one tonight then?
Is there any desire to do a project that's only partially funded with TA? I'm just throwing it out there, you can.
I'm watching the costume look.
Well, I'm just saying, if you could get up to getting somewhere, it, it adds a lot into these applications. So if you could get somewhere instead of just ending, oh, we got seventeen hundred dollar, or, you know, we can get seventeen hundred feet, we just stop it there and here's a path to nowhere, doesn't look too good. So if we can get connective, connectivity to these areas.
So let me ask you this, Jim. I mean, and we talked about this one other time too, and this is coming up. Um, if we know what the cost is roughly gonna be, and if we know we're not probably gonna get the full.
Right.
Nut for it, right?
And this is twenty-five now.
Yeah.
So.
But I mean, we can forecast that and we can probably put some monies aside for this.
Yeah, so if, if what I, you would probably need at least getting to Deer Creek Parkway was a priority, is a priority, just for connecting Deer Creek to the far, to the Horace schools. Personally, I think you could probably have a pretty good case if you got to at least Lions Park. You get, get to Sunnyside and then you keep working your way, your way north.
North from there, yeah.
Yeah, and there's gonna be some commercial on Seventy-sixth or Sixty-fourth and Seventeen, and nothing that says this can't be constructed as part of, a path can't be constructed as part of that, so.
If we show the Southdale plat, aren't we getting somewhere?
Yes, yeah. Yep, so between the Southdale plat, all those homes coming online, connecting to the schools, plus the connection to Lions Park, I think you need a destination to end to, and I think Lions Park is probably that place to go.
That makes sense.
And it gives you till twenty-five to get your funding kind of in order. So we would do, what we would do is we would put together the, the package, the application package, request the two hundred thousand dollars, and then just show that the city is willing, this is important enough to get up to Lions Park, that you aren't gonna just go with what the funding is, you're gonna go getting to a destination. Similar to what we did with, uh, as a, with the final flush. You know, you're gonna propose a cost share. We're gonna do, we're gonna do three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of work and two hundred of it's gonna be, gonna be, uh, um, grant.
Yeah. I, I know we can help cover some of this too, but you can't have the road to nowhere. It's gotta be a, again, point that makes sense, so. Plus, we need the trails, let's get real.
A lot of houses up in that Southdale Deer Creek area.
Mm-hmm. So you want us just basically, it's to give a motion to proceed, right?
I would like a motion to proceed to, uh, for the TA grant twenty twenty-five to be from Seventy-third, is that what Chris lives on?
Chris lives on Seventy-third.
From Seventy-third to Sunnyside, to Sunnyside Drive, Lions Park, let's just say Lions Park.
Yeah, just the Lions Park, that's.
Only the other two are actually still.
Anything we can work that into budgeting, so we don't have to be.
No, I don't think that's gonna be, we're not talking a million dollars.
No, it's like a couple hundred thousand dollars, maybe three hundred thousand dollars by the time you factor in the stuff that doesn't get, isn't the cost share.
Tip, tip, tip that these are far enough out to where we get the comfort pretty easily.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's, I mean, I'm not worried about this. We were talking five million dollars, we still have a window there as well, but because it's a longer timeframe that we're dealing with.
Yep.
So, anyway, um, I'm looking for a motion to accept, guys.
I'll make a motion to accept the transportation alternative grant, um, from Seventy-third to Twenty-first, or Twenty-first.
Got it. Naomi made a motion. Chelsea's in. All right, Chelsea, give a second, all in favor say aye. All right, motion carries. It's going to the Riverdale subdivision there, Brian.
Okay. Let's see. Okay, and pull this up so you have a reference. Uh, this is more just a discussion, but I wanted to make sure the council's aware of this. I foresee that we would have more discussions at the council level. However, there's some concerns tied to it. So what you see is, uh, the Riverdale subdivision. Uh, this would be just south of the bridge or the Cheyenne, uh, Sixty-fourth Street and Trailer Park or down this area. But on the west side of the road, Riverdale is a subdivision of twenty-one, twenty-two homes.
There's thirty homes in there.
Maybe thirty. So less, approximately twenty, twenty to thirty homes. They have their own well, they're on well water. Technically, if they're to be serviced by, or served by a public water supply other than the well that they have for their neighborhood, it would be Casper Water. We don't know exactly when yet. This is agreed to, but at some point, there was a, I believe it was probably more of a verbal agreement, but we're trying to track down history behind this. But the city is doing all the water testing and monitoring of their well for them. The concern is that we're on the hook for all the reporting, all the testing. Even if they were on a different public water supply, they wouldn't be a horse customer. So our concern is that either they should do their own reporting, like all the other neighborhoods that do have wells. We have a couple other neighborhoods in town that have their own wells. Or if they were to have another agency do the reporting for them, it would make more sense for Casper Water, not for, say, a horse. Because if they were to connect onto a public water supply, it'd be Casper. It's like, we are looking deeper into this, but I wanted to make sure council's aware of this situation. Um, the state is aware of it too, and they've been confused to why the city has been doing this for years also. So like I said, I wanted to make sure you're aware of this. If you had any questions, I may not be able to answer every single question, but I could look into it too. So if you had any questions that you'd like me to look into, I'd be more than happy to do so.
Goodness, we're generous, aren't we?
The biggest concern that we have is the lighting copper sampling. It's fairly difficult because you have to get so many houses at a minimum. And I believe Rset's telling me five or six homes have to participate in that. And it's fairly difficult to do, get the, get the homes to participate. They have to fill out a job, they have a couple criteria they have to meet. And then we have to send it in, and then also the other thing that we have to do is, uh, angle report for them. And, which is called Consumer Confidence Report or CCR. So it's a, I want to bring this to your attention because we're concerned about this. Make sure you're aware of it, and that we'd be looking deeper into this.
Yeah, it's probably okay. Look a little more into that.
Any questions tied to this, or? No? Okay?
Okay.
That's all I have on this one.
All right, then we'll move on to twenty-one. You got this one?
Yes, so before you have this, San Andreas improvement district twenty twenty-one dash six. As you may recall, we awarded a little bit to C C Steel. Um, in my excitement of awarding to C C Steel, I, um, forgot to have you award to, this broke out into either general work, electrical work or combination of general work and electrical work. Um, the electrical that was low on it was John's Refrigeration and Electrical out of Valley City. So we awarded the general work to C C Steel. We didn't award the, uh, electrical to, to John's heating and electric, uh, heating and, and, uh, refrigeration and electric. So we just need a motion to, to award. Well, we, we pushed everything through, but I just wanted to make sure we had everything cleaned up on a motion side, so. So we just need a motion to award the electrical contract to John's Refrigeration and Electric Incorporated.
Okay, I'll make a motion to award, uh, improvement district twenty-one, or twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one dash six.
The electrical.
The electrical contract to John's Refrigeration and Electric out of Valley City.
They gave out a sixty thousand four hundred and fifty-four dollars fifty-nine cents.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Second. Can we roll call this one for it? Win her. Okay, Naomi? Chelsea?
Aye.
And Jeff? All right, motion passed. Move on to twenty-two, Jim.
All right, we'll run through the construction project status reports. First one we have for you is water improvement district number twenty twenty dash six. Um, big work in the last couple weeks as they got underneath County Route seventeen with the casing pipe over on Liberty Lane. Some miscellaneous cleanup, and they will be proposing, or they're planning on doing the connection at Eighth Street. Um, that will loop one dead end that has been a key piece of getting looping done, and that is on Liberty to, to Eighth. Uh, there was also a water service line that was found to be on private, on a neighbor's property over on, on, uh, Dakota Drive. So they're working this week. The, the way that I figured it out to be is that the homeowner on the corner of Thui and Dakota used to own the garage to the west of him. When they sold the garage off, water line was on the garage property. So now the water line for the house is on the garage property, and they're having trouble with the line. So, um, we have easements in place now to bore in the new line this week, getting that, it's the Raskes is the, is the ones who live there, adjacent to the senior center, to get them a new service line that's on.
Getting that, it's the Rasc's is the, is the ones who live there adjacent to the senior center, to get them a new service line that's on their property, that's all good. So that will be done hopefully yet this week. We do have a, a cost increase on that one, but I didn't have all the numbers to bring to you today. But you can't have water main on neighbor's property or water service line on a neighbor's property. So there was some funkiness going on in that part of the world. There was a parallel water service to the main. So instead of bringing the water service right off the main to the house, they ran a larger inch and a half perpendicular to the main and then branched off of that, back to the houses. So it was part of the water replacement, but we cleaned all that up, so everybody comes off the main now, not off these lateral type, type mains. So got all that cleaned up. They're twenty-eight percent complete. I think that's pretty much going to be the end of it for, for these guys once they get this week and maybe into next week. But after that, I think they're getting pretty much done for the, done for the year, so. Any questions on that, on the water replacement? Okay? Oh, yes, I forgot.
So part of this to Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the city has been working with PFA to get bonding through the state, to the Clean Water Reserve Fund. So we need a motion from the council to approve the bond documents from PFA so they can submit them to the states. Then the city has funds on hand to, to pay, I think Pay Request one's already been.
It's, we're waiting for reimbursements.
Yeah, so the city needs to.
So the, the PFA is a public finance authority and they, they. They're the ones who do the reimbursements for the construction improvements for the loan, the DWSRF loan.
So the city recently, or our office recently got those documents and the city needs money, so we need to get those approved. So we can get that submitted and that's for twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven. And Brent has those documents in his binder.
Do you need us to do that tonight, is that what you're getting at?
Yes, please, just a motion to approve the, the bond documents.
All right, I guess I'm going to make a motion to approve bond documents for Public Finance Authority for Assistant Districts twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven, I believe is what you said?
Yep.
Okay, Jeff made a motion, can I get a second? Naomi does it a second, all right. And roll call this one then too. Chelsea? It'll happen. Jeff?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries, okay, next, Jim.
All right, the next one we have is Water Sewer Storm Street Improvement District twenty twenty-one dash three, Lakeview Edition. Project is seventy-two percent complete with fifty-five percent of the time being used. Completion date in this project is seven twenty-seventh, so July twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-two. So work completed since the last, last summary was there seventy-five percent of the roadway excavation and subgate prep, seventy-five percent of the fabric, seventy-five percent of the streets, the tubed streets. Fifty percent of the street lighting, fifty percent of the landscaping, that's Babbling Brook, and fifty percent of the concrete flatwork. Work anticipated for this month is there's a water main tie-in as part of a change order that was on the south side of the road connecting to Wall Avenue is to be done next week. Babbling Brook work, lights, concrete flatwork, roadway X. A lot of this is video, is not video, is weather dependent. If they can get into work, I think they will continue to work, but I don't really foresee many people working in December unless the weather is absolutely great. I just, I don't see it, so. As you can see here, sanitary sewer is a hundred percent complete, water main is a hundred percent of the mains, ninety percent of our change order work. Storm sewer is complete, roadway construction is either fifty to seventy-five percent complete. So I think that the electrical, lines, electrical and the flatwork maybe will increase, but I think that most of it is going to be maybe a week or two left on it, so. Next one is Terraguard's third edition, Water Sewer Storm Street Improvement District twenty twenty-one dash two. They are sixty-two percent complete with eighty-three percent of the time used. The completion date is November thirtieth, so a couple of weeks. Since last, last was, since last summary, they got the area completed, the curb and gutters completed and the first list of ass, lift of asphalt. We had some concerns about that, being able to get a lift of asphalt down, out on there to seal it up for the winter, they weren't able to get that done. So work anticipated for the rest of the month is just preparing the site for winter. I don't think there's going to be doing much more, much more work out there. South Dale Farms, third edition. Final walkthrough on third edition was completed a week ago. Site's been opened up to the electrical private utilities and that one was ahead of schedule. The completion date was eleven sixteen and they got, they got it done by that time, so. There is some work that may drag into the fall on Conroy Road Seventeen, but it might be done with the additional, some cleanup of some ditches and that might be done with the fourth edition. We'll have some discussions with the county on how to proceed with that. But they did, they did flatten out the slopes to four to ones.
Are you sure that's four to one?
They're, they were, they, we were checking it, I'll double check, but we had a, they did it, it wasn't four to one. And then they redid it because I was out there last Monday.
Okay.
As they were redoing it, it was supposed to be checked, so then the storm hit on Wednesday, so. But anyways, so that one is, we'll be crossing that one off the list here.
So they did the hydro mulching, was that on top of the snow or under the snow?
Before the snow.
That was under the snow.
That was under the snow. There, they, they got it in on Tuesday. Yeah.
Huh.
And the streetlights work.
Yep.
All of them, are we, are we missing one there? Was that the?
No, they fixed that too.
I just wonder if that was the, the project that was missing an entire like bulb out.
It was actually, now that you say that. So, no, it wasn't, that was on Cut Creek.
Okay.
Someone took the globe off the top or the luminaire. That was on Cut Creek.
Didn't have a top, yeah, but they replaced, they fixed it.
Yep.
So anyways, that's what I got for you, construction wise. Like you, you've seen a bunch of construction projects going through for next year, so we'll have a summary for those in the next, probably in the next, with the next meeting, I'll have a summary for you on what the design looks like. And what we're, where we're sitting far as improvement districts and funds, or costs. So questions, comments, concerns?
Nope, so we'll proceed on. Brent, you got, what do you have for that?
First one I have here is in regards to Pre-Scale, Pre-Scale. They are building a business, they're, they're business in the Visto subdivision. They do not have the driveway lamp or landscaping complete. They're requesting temporary certificate of occupancy. Typically, I don't bring, we don't bring this to state council, but being the dynamics going on with this project, they've brought concerns such as even the driveway to state council before or in the past. What I'd be proposing is that we'd have the state attorney draft an agreement stating that as long as they're good with bill inspection side. They could have a temporary CO for the dr, with the driveway and landscaping not being completed yet. They would need to have those completed next summer. And if they did not complete those, then we can come in and take care of that or basically as an agreement force them to make sure, assurance that those will be completed. And if council is all right with that, have an agreement of that nature, then we'd be able to have Lucas draft that and get that executed. So Pre-Scale can get their certificate of occupancy. They're hoping to be able to move in on Monday next week, but I told, I'd be presenting this as an option to council for consideration, so.
Lucas, you see any issues with that at all?
No.
I don't really either, I'm just.
And they've already provided the city with the statement saying that they'll pave it once Visto Industrial is done.
Yeah.
But we'll beef it up into an agreement.
Yeah.
I guess I don't. I don't see any issues with it.
We do have that pavement project going through the special assessment process right now. For the Visto, so the entire industrial park to be through. If, if council is all right with that, I would ask that we have a motion. I wish that we had besides a standalone item for you, but we didn't have it there.
Make a motion to direct Lucas, create an agreement between Pre-Scale and City of Horace to finish their driveway. To allow them a temporary certificate of occupancy.
Does that work for you, Lucas, or you need more?
That works.
Will you get a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Jeff does a motion, Naomi does a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Okay, the next one I have is just a heads up for council that community development director position is open until filled. However, first review of applications deadline is today. So I thought it was Friday, but we actually put, so people had the weekend, so they have until today or tonight to get their application in if they want to be conservative as the first review of applications. I spoke, I spoke with the recruiter on Wednesday last week and we were on five or six. Not very many applications, but that is, as like you heard Sheriff Johnner, they have difficulty with recruiting law enforcement. This is a conversation that we've had with other recruiters for other positions too. It's a challenge getting very many applications.
It's all over now.
Yes, it's across the board. We do have some. Some candidates in that mix. I don't know all the details tied to each of candidates yet or the ones that have been forwarded on to us for consideration have not been, haven't seen anything yet. But typically that would come about here in the next week or two, I'd see that, so. I'll keep the council posted as we get more information. Public Works position, we did some interviews for that here about two weeks ago. I'm working out details to make an offer to one of the candidates that we did interview. Public Works, they need a lot, they need help and we need to get somebody on in the near future so we could have that help with our snow original fall, because we all love snow. And the last one I had is, if you didn't see yet, the flags went up last week for Veterans Day. Staff are taking them down today and putting up Christmas lights. So you'll see Christmas lights up today or tonight, you'll see some of them, and tomorrow, their plan is to put the rest of them up that we have, so.
Yeah, now we got more poles, we got to start working more stuff.
We forward those lights, we'll get them in next year, so. That's all I had.
That's all you got? All right. Let's see, we're full of the reports. December second, I've got the mega cities executive board meeting out in Bismarck. That's when we'll be deciding who are, doing the final, whatever you want to say, blessing on our new person who's going to be replacing Blake Crosby, so. Be out there for that. Other than that, we got the December seventh State Water Commission meeting thing that we got to go to, so. We got to sit down, Jim, you, me and Brent, and come up with the bullet points we're going to do for that one. The other thing I'll just mention on Wall Avenue, being that guy's going to be brought up again tonight. The sooner that we can move this thing along, the better, because if we have to go into April, May or June and start bidding this thing, the cost is going to be up fifteen percent just thinking about it. Bad enough where we're at, so we want to try and keep these costs down, you know, to make sure we move this project along. So we want to try and hit our deadlines and do what we can to keep things moving. Sarah's not here, Naomi, what you got?
I don't really have much, there's a steering committee for the hundred and fiftieth. There's a meeting on Wednesday at six o'clock, right here. I'm unable to make it unfortunately, because I have a work meeting that I need to be at. But Sally and Bobby are going to be heading that up, so hoping that volunteers that would like to help out with that can be here for that. And if you are interested in helping with that committee, we would love to have you, so just kind of reach out and we'll get you hooked up. That's all I have.
Okay. Chelsea, you want to get to name that?
I'll spare you my update, but thanks for asking.
Fair enough.
You didn't have to type everything, come on. I don't have a whole lot for tonight, it's been quiet so far this month, so. Sure, sweet, I will make a motion to adjourn.
All right, make a motion to adjourn, a second. Naomi does a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.